Hello everyone. You might have remembered me from last year. My memory, I don't have a good memory except for the things that my husband says 10 years ago, I remember that. But anyway, my name is Siti Suryadam, I'm a senior project manager in the funding and asset management group at Widows Ravanel. Also with me is Adam Caldwell back there, prime experience manager, someone who would you be seeing more often than me. Today I'm here to give project related updates for the sewer AI project that we're all doing for, for the village. With that, I'm going to be covering a little bit on the overview of what is an AIA MP process. And then we'll jump into the water and sewer AI project related updates. So what is an AIA MP? An AIA is the Asset Inventory Assessment Term used by the state grant program where these two projects are currently being funded. And basically the grant program was started to encourage utilities to proactively manage your assets, become more viable. Make those sound capital financial decisions in maximizing the value of their assets and minimizing the cost that occurred over the years. An asset management plan is the AMP that is a deliverable that we are producing as a part of these two projects. And what it really gives is a full understanding about your system, where you need to focus your money on, how do you prioritize your projects? And gives you all the information what you need to know about your assets, about your collection system and distribution system. So, a typical AMP consists of five core components. The first one being what does your system consist of? Without knowing what assets you have, it's difficult to manage your assets. So, what assets do you own? Where are they located? Knowing the location of the assets is also very important. And what condition are they in as of today? And what are the replacement values? Where they are with their life cycle? Are they close to the end of useful life or are they somewhere in the middle? So you can plan accordingly as to when you need to replace those assets. Second is the, what is the required level of service? So are your assets performing the way they were designed to perform? They were supposed to perform. So if a pump is designed to perform for 100 gallons per minute, is it performing 10 years later the same 100 gallons per minute? Probably not. But is it down to 20 gallons per minute? That is 80% down to its efficiency. So you need to know whether your assets are leading or are they performing the way they're supposed to. That is the criticality aspect. So not all the assets are equally, all assets are important. But which out of those assets, which ones are the ones that are more critical than the others? Just what Jim was talking earlier, like you need to find where your critical assets are so that you can focus on those assets to minimize the impact of the risk of failure. So if there are any critical users, critical infrastructure, if there are schools or power stations or when public works building, an asset is serving that. You need to make sure that these assets are prioritized so there's there's minimum service interruptions when that asset fails. So, and I'll go over that in detail on how we are going to build those risk, risk values so that we can prioritize your projects. And then, once we have the risks calculated, which ones do we need to put on your capital improvement plans? So that it will be more proactive managing, not just able to repair, rehab and replace those assets without them waiting for them to fail and then that could be an additional cost to fix it. So, performing that risk analysis and getting to your CIP planning is the T-Star. And then obviously, where does the funding come from? How are you going to pay for those projects? So looking at your rate structure, looking at your funding programs that are available, which projects may have a higher chance of getting the funding and all those kind of things does also include in the AMP process. So with that, the sewer AI project scope is task one is obviously the project management and grant administration, which is going to go throughout the life cycle of the project. Task two, data request and records review. What we did as a part of that is that we looked at all the data, what you have with respect to your assets. We, and I'll go over each of these tasks in detail in the upcoming slides. And kind of compiling all that asset information in one place. GIS mapping crucial step because you need to know where your assets are and the data on those assets, your pipe diameter, its material. Locations and wells or storage tanks, whatever you have in your system, they're all will be housed in the GIS. It's a very crucial step for this asset management process. Task four, which is for the sewer AI project, we have done some condition assessments to identify your condition of your pump stations. We came down and did drawdown testing at your pump stations to identify again, where are the pumps as of today? When they were designed versus when they were designed. So are they pumping to the same level as their condition deteriorated over the years and does pumping capacities have reduced? So we looked at that information. We also did some smoke testing, actually as a matter of fact, we started on Friday, covered about three fourths of the critical areas. And we are going to be coming back and covering the remaining ones in this. And then finally, the deliverable itself, which is asset management plan, which consists of your entire asset inventory, the risk analysis, how did we calculate your risk force? What were the likelihood of failure, consequences of failure, criterias? And we developed the CIP projects list and the ONM improvement recommendations as well as the life cycle paths. And then finally, the financial analysis and rate study. What a project is similar scope. We have added a couple of additional scope items which gives the village couple an understanding or recommendations on water looping and valve placements. And I'll go over the benefits of doing that as well as some district meter and area recommendations. So to basically look at where are the areas where you're seeing a lot of water losses, maybe there's a lot of leaks. And also how do you isolate your system to minimize an impact whenever you're doing your repair or rehabilitation work? And also looking at the water looping is basically providing redundancy for your customers so that the, you minimize the impact of high failure. So let's talk about the tasks that's been completed, the data request and records review. What we did as a part of this is that we looked at all your existing information about your system. So any drawings, information such as ONM manuals or AS bills, what does the system consist of? What does your collection system consist of? What does your distribution system consist of? So we took all those drawings, we scanned them and we incorporated all that information into GIS. So once the information gets incorporated into a database, into the GIS database, you have all these pipes and everything. And then we try to connect where, which one to complete the network connectivity. And we identify where there are gaps within that system so that we can deploy our field crews, go out of field, collect that information to fill in those gaps and complete that network connectivity. So, I can start from this, we performed the data gap analysis, we identified areas where we need to send our field crew out to collect the data. So that they can snow out, bring the information such as inward elevations or rim elevations, pipe diameters, materials, whatever is missing in the GIS mapping and bring that back into the office, perform QACQC and complete that system connectivity. Once we have done that, before submitting the GIS deliverable, we give a couple of system map book exercises so that we can capture your staff's institutional knowledge. Because most of the times, there will be something in the drawings, but later on, as part of the ONM operation and maintenance strategies about what have been relocated or something. So we make sure that we incorporate or capture your staff's institutional knowledge into the GIS mapping. So that we have the latest and greatest and most accurate information in the mapping before we deliver it. So we did that through exercises and we finalized the GIS deliverable and delivered that last month, last year, in December. And our GIS online viewer is basically helps your field staff. So whenever there's a pipe leak or something, you can just kind of like open it on your tablet or your phone, go out and see where exactly a valve is, where is the manhole? They need to close the valve, where do they need to go? So it's kind of a really hand hands-on application that anybody can use it. Use a friendly application, so that is currently your GIS data is getting published into that our GIS online web viewer. Once we have that ready, then it will be good to go for your use. Condition assessment has what we're doing for the sewer. We're doing the small testing like I mentioned, scheduled for last Friday, that was completed about, I think 74 of the system that what we have selected. And we also did from station drawdown testing back in June. So over the results in a bit. The smoke testing is basically smoke is getting introduced, introduced smoke to a blower into the system through a manhole. So that whenever there are pipe breaks or cracks, you'll see the smoke coming out of like maybe people's yards or like through the roads. Because whenever there is a crack, you'll see the smoke coming out. So you know, like if for certain, there's a pipe, how many cracks or you know, what are the, what condition the pipe is in? The number of defects, identify the condition of the pipe, more the defects, the worse the pipe condition is. So, what you're seeing on to your left here is basically the deliverable of how it's going to look like. All the red pipes are the ones that flood in a poor condition. The green are basically good, that means like, you know, there's not very much smoke that has come out, so not many defects identified. And then there's, there's fair and poor conditions. So we're going to look at all the results and we're gonna assign a condition rating just based on those defects and what our field crew has seen. And provide you with a map, something like that. So you can focus on those areas where you see the red lines that is going to go into CIP projects because you have seen many defects in those pipes. Smoke testing not only contributes for premature pipe failure, but it's mainly to identify where are your INI, where's the amount of INI coming from. So if a pipe has too many defects, obviously there's whenever there's rain, this water that gets infiltrated into the pipes and all that pipe, you know, eats up the pipe capacity as well as goes into your treatment plant where you're spending time and money to treat clean rainwater. So, obviously waste of time and resources. And these are the locations that we have selected in the purple boxes on the top and bottom for the smoke testing. Like I said, we completed about 75% of that. And from what I heard from my field crew this morning, seemed like there wasn't too many defects identified. But we're going to complete that and once we have that pipe ready with all the condition ratings, we're going to have that presented to you all during our board meeting, once the project is completed.
Yes, sorry. The selection of those areas made by?
Town staff, village staff.
By our staff, okay.
Because we typically ask like if you know, there's any critical areas in the system that you're seeing a lot of, you know, INI or maybe some issues, a lot of repairs or things like that going on. So we asked village staff to, you know, to identify those locations. Or there are times when if certain client doesn't know problems, then we look at the GIS data to see where are the oldest areas in the system? To see those pipes, what condition are they in? Because most of the times what happens is that when we don't have conditions like CCTV data or smoke testing data, we look at the age data to see where, which pipes have been there for a really long time. Because technically they're supposed to fail sooner than the others, but not always. Some of the pipes which might be old, might be still performing well, but there's might be some pipes depending on the type of wastewater they're receiving, depending on the location. Because soil conditions have an impact on the pipe deterioration. So those kind of things, it might be a pipe that is probably good for 80 years, but is already failing 50 years. Because again, based on the soil conditions where it is in, the pipe gets kind of like gets deteriorated, the loading and everything else has an impact. So some of, we've seen some of like newer pipes also in a bad condition than the pipes that are old, older. So kind of the smoke testing and CCTV really gives you that actual condition of the pipe. CCTV is basically the camera that gets introduced in the pipes to exactly give what's going on inside the pipe. So those are some things which gives the actual condition of the pipe better.
Could I, JP, when I'm looking at this, you know, I look at, you know, stage one areas. On the west.
We're limited in smoke testing because it has limited to gravity only, and those are our two gravity sections.
Got it, okay. Okay, thanks.
And you don't see CCTV force mains, so that's where we were stuck and didn't do this. We don't have, you know, the main one, you have 80% gravity, 20% force main. Out here we have 80% force main, 20% gravity. So you can't really put a camera in a force main.
Got it, okay.
So this was less about those criteria she said, and really, these are the two default areas that we could do this.
Our priority, which is INI.
Okay.
Evaluating all INI islandwide. And these two areas were picked because they're the only gravity areas.
Okay.
But they are the low areas and there are chances those were two hot points that we wanted to check out with.
Okay.
And these are your pump station drawdown test results. What we really do at this, as a part of this, is that like I mentioned, pump has been installed for a design capacity, for example, your primary main. If you see on the the bottom, the gallons per minute that it was designed, 600 gallons per minute. When we did the drawdown testing, we looked at the water levels and timed it and see how much those pumps are able to pump. Pump one was actually 75, pump two is at 539. So they're really at, they're 63% efficiency and 88% efficiency. So obviously pump one will be in that medium risk or, you know, depending on how it performs over the next couple of years. Maybe this like in the next three or five years, it's a time for that pump to be replaced. The last three pump stations, West forehead will obviously be on the top of the list because its efficiencies are 34% and 43%. Pump one and pump two. Steven Bonnet is in a pretty good condition, 98% and 78%. Hune Ridge is at 62 and 100% on pump tubes. Pump two is performing really well versus pump one. Do you have a question? And on central main, that was one pump station, we did not have the manufacturer's information. We are still in the process of getting the design capacity without knowing what the pump was designed for. It's a little difficult for us to put like where is it with its efficiency? But looking at the size of that pump station, it seemed to be pretty similar to primary main. So we kind of made it that range between 300 to 600 gallons per minute. So if it is 300 gallons per minute, it's at like 37%, 37% efficiency, but it's at 600, then you know, it's at 80% efficiency. South forehead is the one pump station that those pumps were not able to keep up and were failing. And that was the pump station that we did provide village staff that it need to be replaced as soon as possible. So once the GIS is completed, the condition assessment has been completed, the next steps are to prepare the asset management plan itself. So as a part of this process, we worked on, we created the asset inventory. So what we're going to do is that this asset management plan is going to have the number of mile of your pipes, sizes of pipes, like how much 18 inch pipes you have? How many linear feet of 6 inch pipes you have? How many manholes do you have? All that kind of information will be in there. And then we're going to perform that risk analysis, the criticality, what I was talking about, to see which assets in your system are critical than the others. And then we're going to prepare that CIP projects list. We're going to perform, we're going to conduct a CIP workshop where once we have this draft CIP list, we're going to provide the draft CIP list to you all. Go over how we came up with that list and obtain your input to see if you want to add any other projects or if you want to package them differently. Just to kind of make sure that we obtain the staff input before we finalize it and include that in the AM. We also will include the things that what we have noticed throughout the project with respect to your operation and maintenance improvement strategies. We'll include that as well as, we also have a like sample modeling tool that we are going to be including as a part of the project where you're going to have a good long-term understanding of your financial needs of the system based on your current state of the system. And then the rate study, the financial analysis part. And then, once we have all this completed, we'll have the draft asset management plan for you all to review as well as the state to review. The state needs to check that so that they can make sure that all the deliverable, whatever has been included matches the scope of what we have submitted to the state. And then once we receive your comments and the state's comments, we're going to finalize it and then come back here and then do a presentation. So this is a condition criticality of the risk analysis is what I call. So risk is calculated based on likelihood of failure and times the consequences of failure. So, likelihood of failure, we look at criteria such as the age of the pipe, like I was talking about. If a pipe is new, it's likely your failure is lesser than the other pipes which have been installed and they're more closer to the end of their useful life, or maybe even have surpassed their end of useful life. So those are the pipes which will be in your upper ranking of likelihood of failure. Now, if there are say 100 pipe segments in your system that are pretty old, all of them have surpassed their end of useful life. So how do you prioritize over those 100 pipes? You look at consequences of failure, you see the impacts. So if you have pipes that are, if they fail, maybe you'll have a regulatory in compliance. Or maybe you will have, they serve critical users such as schools or public works, parks or any commercial districts or any important customers that you have. So you want to make sure that, you know, those impacts or the number of customers itself. Maybe there's a large pipe that if it fails, the impact of that failing is much larger. Like a lot of customers are going to go out of service versus there are other pipes which might be like a couple of residents who are not able to get the service. So we look at that impacts of a pipe failure and we look at that consequences of failure and calculate risk based on that. So, obviously if, if any pipes that are at the higher likelihood of failure and higher consequences of failure, they will be in this extreme category. In the right category where they'll be on top of your CIP list. And any assets that are in the lower likelihood of failure but higher consequences or higher likelihood of failure and the lower consequences will be in the medium category. And then finally, lower consequences of failure, lower likelihood of failure are the assets which you don't have to worry about any time soon. So that's how the risk is calculated. And your CIP projects are generated based on those extreme risk assets and prioritized accordingly in the most sensible way. So this will be your CIP for the next 10 years. And you'll be including, once we complete the risk matrix, risk analysis, and we'll go over the list of projects on, you know, how we have come up with those risks. What was the criteria that we use for the likelihood of failure and consequences of failure? And again, obtain your input to see if you want to add any other projects, you want to package them differently? Or you want to, there's an existing project that you want to include? Or if there are certain areas in your system that your staff knows that, you know, this pipe, even though it's new, it's been giving us a lot of trouble and you, we want to get this replaced. So we add that into the CIP, so we can do that at that point. Again, a sample operation and maintenance plan, we're going to provide some standard procedures for maintaining the water and sewer collection, distribution system, pump stations, well, storage sites. But then again, like I said, if there's anything specific that we have found throughout the project cycle, we're going to include that in the ONM recommendations. Life cycle model, this is the one that I was talking about. So what the life cycle model really does is that it looks at the bigger picture. It looks and gives you a good understanding of your long-term financial needs of your system based on the current state. So they'll look at, you know, a couple of budget scenarios. So based on the current state of your system, maybe if there are 50 manholes that you need to replace in year 2030, how much money you need to keep aside yearly, on yearly basis so that you'll be able to fund those bank for replacement project. We'll look at different budget scenarios such as like, you know, we do a calibration. If you have all kinds of money in this world, what do you want to do with that money? Where do you want to focus on that? And then there will be also a simulation which, which is basically looking at your current budget and see how much you'll be able to do in fixing your assets with your current budget. And then also there's a recommended budget scenario, where the life cycle model will give you, this is what your budget needs to be so that your system is up and running continuously. Financial analysis and rate study, like I mentioned, your waters were AI projects have financial analysis. So that once the CIP projects are built, when the life cycle modeling results come out, the finance team is going to look at all that because they'll know what are your needs based on the CIP list and based on the life cycle modeling list. And they're going to look at your current rate structure, historical rates and everything else. And then we'll identify what your rate increases need to be and provide you with some recommendations to be able to find those projects. And finally, the additional scope items that I was talking about with respect to the water AI project that we are currently looking at some of your existing data to see if we can provide some recommendations on water looping, valve placements as well as district metering areas. So what does a water looping valve placement really helps? Like I mentioned, is that water looping is basically, you know, you can provide service from both ends rather than just linearly from one end. So if a part of this pipe fails, there's always like another direction that the remaining customers can get full service without being able to be, you know, for being able to be taken to, without being out of service for a longer time so that by the time this pipe get fixed, 50 customers of yours are not out of, out of service. So the, the impact is much lesser. And then the valve placements also is basically to give you that isolation. So that whenever there's a pipe main break or something and you're fixing it, the, the impacts to your customer service is much lesser than for larger. District metered areas is a great way to identify your water losses in the system. So as you can see, an example, figure here, that whatever flow is coming from your tanks, there are, your entire system is broken down into branches. And you know, what you're going to monitor that is what is the flow that is going into your customers? And then which areas are, you know, based on the demand? And you're going to kind of like balance that and see how much am I sending, sending? How much are my customers receiving? And, and the difference between those two is your water losses or non-revenue water. So this is an example of a deliverable that we did for another client of us. But the entire system was broken into not solely east zone, west zone, south zone. And as you can see, the east zone, the blue is the build consumption from the customer data. And then the, the inflow is the light blue which, and how do you see? And then the water loss is basically the difference which is gives the red. So you can see that the east zone has a lot more of volume of water losses than the remaining other zones. So that district metered areas like really gives you that understanding of where your system needs more attention than the others. In terms of project schedule, like I mentioned, we are going to be completing the smoke testing this month. We've completed the data, the GIS database and mapping, all that has been completed last year. We're in the process of getting the smoke testing completed this month and we'll provide you with those results. We're also looking at these additional scope items for the water AI project. Schedule to be completed by April. And once we have all this completed, we'll jump into that risk analysis and develop your CIP projects. To be scheduled to be completed by June. And then we're going to have the life cycle modeling work completed in July, financial analysis in August. Then we can start, there has a financial plan that they will set out for you all to review in August, September timeframe. But as soon as we, we're going to have final AMP as a TBD is because a copy of the plan AMP is going to go to the state. And, and we are not sure when they're going to provide their comments because sometimes it takes longer. So based on whenever we receive their comments, we are going to make sure that we address those comments, we finalize the AMP, we submit that. And we'll come back here, do a presentation and move into project closeout. Questions?
Exhausted.
Certainly going to have a much better, much better sense of what we have and what needs fixing. Instead of just crossing our fingers that there's a pipe or a pump or something underground, it's about to blow. And just wait for that.
We're going to get as much data, science oriented as we can.
Yeah. Zach, are you on board here? Yes, Zach? Unmute yourself. Yeah, okay.
Must step away.
Yeah. Now, my, my question for him, so he's our financial director. And we put into place a couple of years ago, I think now, a Matt, planning software for our finances. And to be able to look at his software in conjunction to your output will be critical, very interesting. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, once we get into that life cycle modeling and the financial analysis part, we'll we'll take all the data, what you have, uh, what's your current budget and, you know, what is the projections that you have? And based on that, we are gonna look at the needs based on C I P projects and then compare and see, you know, discuss, have a workshop with you all, discuss and make sure that we obtain your input and everything before we finalize our recommendations and do that.
When you're looking at your data and, you know, it's come up, you know, and we're looking at strong water, whatever, um, and build out, you know, and and I'm looking at assessing what we have, what needs to be repaired. And then the other side of that is, where is it going next? You know, we have another, so we have another two fifths build out. What is that, what implication does that have on your assessment of our existing condition? Yeah.
This project, um, you know, we have, not that we have not done this, but we have done like hydraulic modeling for some of our A I projects. But unfortunately, with uh the budget that be, the state has given on these points, we're able to do only the condition and criticality at this point. Uh, but I, now that A I A's can be applied uh every three years, um, maybe if you would be interested to apply for the fall again, that's when you finish the three years and not when you you got your first A I in twenty twenty-two. So you'll be eligible to apply more funding in fall. Maybe that is, you know, a lot of times clients do that, uh, first create this inventory and everything to see what you have in your system. And then next, look at building a hydraulic model and look at the capacity wise, like, you know, where you are and where you're going with your future um connections and all those kind of things.
Got it.
You know, when you have a significant rain event, how it's going to impact your system, whether you're gonna have S S Os, where are the pipes that you need to, for example, as part of this project, you're only seeing like, okay, this pipe is in a bad condition, I need to replace it. But if you have growth coming in, and what size do I need to replace it by? So that's when a hydraulic model really helps uh to see whether it needs to be upsized or needs to be replaced in kind.
Oh. Anybody else? Well, thanks so much. That was wonderful.
Thank you.